Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Mayor Proton Martin will reflect in the record that Mayor Proton Martin is absent. Mayor Vaterlaus?
Here. Okay, now we're gonna salute the flag led by Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is a special presentation by the Beach Pacific Beach Coalition. And you have about 15 minutes.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Staff, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, and our community members watching at home. And happy Earth Day. It's the real Earth Day today. Thank you for all your support and for the opportunity to talk tonight about what the Beach Coalition's been up to in the last year, and also our big event coming up this Saturday on the 27th. So, we'll start with the first slide here. The Pacific, I want to tell you something really quickly. Pacific, we've changed our name to the Pacific Beach Coalition because we're spreading out in all of San Mateo County at least, and we have our own 501(c)(3). Now, thank you very much, thank you, for, to the Pacifica Environmental Family who has been hosting us for years and years and years. Great support from them and from the City Council, so thank you. So, the Pacific Beach Coalition is dedicated to preserving the ocean, coastal habitat, and wildlife, and ending litter through advocacy, education, community building, and citizen action. We aim to educate, engage, and inspire. And I want to emphasize that some people think the Beach Coalition is just about picking up litter. It's not just about picking up litter. It's more about, in fact, it started in 1997 as an educational organization, and then we spread out. So, the idea now, we're into it almost a generation, 22 years, we're into it now where we're into our second generation. So, we're bringing up students now in the schools who go to the assemblies, et cetera, who don't litter anymore and take care of the environment, and don't use chemicals and things. I could tell you that when we started in Lindemar in 1997, it was not an uncommon occurrence for people to bring their pickup truck, dump a load of pallets, pour gas on it, and have a fire. And that's just one thing, you know. Now, people don't do that anymore, but in addition to that, the trash that was around that fire and all those things had been picked up by people, dog walkers, people who walk the beach, we find lots and lots of people who really, really help out, so we're thankful to our volunteers. So, moving on to the second page, the second slide. Yeah, thanks. Okay, these are some of the 2018 results. This is just in 2018. 14,352 volunteers, 161,196 cigarette butts, many of which, by the way, are from beaches that are non-smoking. And the period is non-smoking. But you know what? You can complain about it, or you can do something about it. So, we're doing something about it. 16,933 pounds of trash, 2,681 pounds of recycled, 50,796 pounds of green waste, 21 school assemblies this year, Daly City, I'm sorry, this last year. Right. Daly City, Pacifica, Hafnun Bay, El Granada, Montero, Hillsborough. Remember that all these students who are getting these assemblies are now the next generation and who are really taking care of their environment on their way up. And 7,500 students, that was in 2018. I also want to remind you that those third, second, third, and fourth statistics there, that would all be in the water if it weren't for the Beach Coalition and all of our fantastic volunteers that help out, okay? So, I think we're saving a lot of things. Recorded data since 2005, now this is only in recorded history since 2005. 112,000 volunteers, 250,000 pounds of trash and recycling, 688,000 cigarette butts since 2013. Sometimes we do the cleanups and we don't think it's a big deal, but oh yeah, there's 3,500 cigarette butts on Lindemar Beach. We pick them all up and, but other people gasp, "Oh, my gosh." So, we have to remember that. Yeah, that's not okay. We are picking them up. Our volunteers are picking them up and really saving them, saving a lot of animal wildlife because of that.
I'd also like to note that since 2005, and those statistics do not include all of the cleanups, because we didn't start recording all of the data. We only recorded data from Earth Day to Coastal Cleanup Day until like 2013, 2014, when we had a staff member that came and we started logging it into our website. So, actually, it might even be since 2014 or 15. So, we've had much higher data than that. We just don't know what it is because we haven't recorded it all so that we could tabulate it up.
And one of the important things about tabulating data, especially with the coastal cleanup and with Earth Day, is for the City Council itself, it means something. And it means a lot, I know it means a lot to you and it means a lot to us, for the public to know what is coming up off the beaches. Not just the beaches, though, and we'll talk about Earth Day in a second, but from everything that washes into the beach. And in the past, we found things that have actually come from ships. That has, that has gone down a little bit. Some of the balloons that they used to use on the cruises that would go out there, we don't see those anymore, which is fantastic. People are really catching on. But I think, I would have to say that the Beach Coalition, again, it's not just about picking up litter. It's not just about planting, restoration. It's about cultural change. And I think, and I have seen in 22 years, a cultural change in Pacifica, all the way up to the city, all the way down to San Gregorio, 50 miles south from people. Tinida's Creek is another great success story. I was gonna say a celebration, a success story down there. That is now being really cleaned up and has turned into a state park. So, that's another one. Next, you wanna talk about this line? This is our big thing. We all want to invite you. April 27th is our, this is our biggest event of the year. April 27th is our Earth Day of Action and EcoFest. The action is from 9:00 to 11:00. Current count, 135-plus groups that are helping us, 135 different groups. Churches, Boy Scouts, Daisies, Brownies, Cub Scouts, all kinds of civic organizers helping us out in those days. And it's not just at the beaches like people think. We're way back, Park Pacifica, we're cleaning up parking lots, anything that can possibly wash into the ocean, and also, of course, just the earth. And we're having plantings and native plant restoration, getting lots of weeds off the beach. People really like that kind of stuff. So, this is our Earth Day of Action and EcoFest. The EcoFest goes from 11:00 to 2:30. It's at Lindemar Beach this year, just north of Taco Bell because of the tanks. It's a fun day with food. We'll go through them here. There's more of that.
Yeah. So, first of all, every year we honor a species. This year, we chose a species other than a plant, an animal, or a living thing. Well, I guess it's living, but it's actually an algae, which is like a plant in the ocean. And kelp I'm learning about, I understand now, is like a tree, most of the kelp. We have two main types of kelp here in Pacifica. We have the giant kelp, and we have the bull kelp. Those are the two most prevalent kinds. There's other kinds as well. And like a tree, these kelp grow seasonally. They start in the spring. They grow up to one to two feet a day. Their stipe goes up with the leaves up on top. The giant kelp has bladders all along the stipe and leaves all along from the, from the base all the way up. But the bull kelp just has blades up on the top above the bladder. So, the stipe is the, is the stem, and we have the holdfast, which has to fasten on to something solid on the ocean floor. Usually, it finds a rock or a rock formation that it can, that it can attach to. And the kelp becomes a habitat and an ecosystem for a lot of living things. It's a nursery for some animals. Marine mammals like to hang out there because outside of the kelp forest, there are great whites. And so, they find protection and, and a home there. So, they're threatened. We've, we're learning how threatened they are. Loss of otters, more sea urchins because the otters would eat the sea urchins and keep them in, in control. Without the otters, we're losing, the, the, the sea urchins eat the kelp, and they'll eat it from the bottom and they'll float away, or it'll eat the entire plant. And we're having this extreme loss of kelp up in Jenner. You probably have heard about that, in north, up in the Marin and beyond. And it's because we've kept the sea otters out, I've learned. Sometimes the fisheries up there, the abalone diving and things, don't really want sea otters to be there because they compete for the abalone and the sea urchins that are harvested. And so, they're finding that the kelp forests are being taken away, and there's, it's a very dangerous thing. Kelp provides oxygen, takes in carbon from the ocean, which we're sinking carbon from our atmosphere into the ocean and causing the coral to die. So, kelp is one way of getting the carbon out. So, it's a very, it helps us be really healthy.
The kelp, the kelp, this year, our honoree drives our assemblies, drives our educational program for the year. And this year, we have 17 elementary schools, one high school. We have three fantastic speakers. Lynn just got back from Hillsborough today and said there was a great speaker there. 6,600 students. And if you're out there, we really want to spread the word, spread the word, spread the word. I'm a teacher myself, and having a free assembly come into a school is really, really a boon for the school. So, we're really happy that we have speakers that are able to do that.
And funding that we receive for sponsorship and from the city and donations help us fund the speakers that go into these assemblies and help us reach these students. Many of these students have been there, if they're in sixth grade, they've already received six different assemblies. So, they're learning all kinds of things about the ocean, about global warming, and about what they can do to be an earth hero every day. And one of the big things is, we try to teach them, is to use their voice, to speak up, to set an example, to be, to be, be the leader that makes good things happen. So, that's one of the good things about the assembly. This is at Cabrillo School with Tom Stafford, and you can see all the students there. It's interesting, the student, there might be a school of 600 and there'll be two assemblies, or there might be a school of 400 with one assembly. And, and our assembly speakers are fantastic and have done a really great job of exciting them about the earth hero. And this earth hero is for the whole year. And we do an earth hero pledge, and we ask everybody to do something all year long to help the kelp. And in the past, last year was the sea stars. The year before that was the sea, sea otters.
Okay, so moving on to the Earth Day of Action and the EcoFest, very quickly, 12 beach cleanups, 15 district cleanups, 17 garden and HR sites. And there are still some sites where we can use help. We can always use more help anywhere within the watershed that's gushing toward the beach. You can, you can look at, just visit the Beach Coalition site, pacifichbeachcoalition.org, and we can help you out with that. It's getting close, but we still have room for more people. EcoFest is next.
Can I just maybe make a note that some of these areas are huge? All of West Sharp Park, all of these streets from IBL down to the golf course, all around the golf course, Lakeside Way, thank you Mary Bear, Lakeside Way, all around the golf course, all the way over to Moose Lodge, all the streets, all the way up to Muscle Rock, Palmetto area, Safeway area, everything. Is this our time?
Yeah, okay. So, the EcoFest, you can see that we have education, 52 educational booth speakers, a plastic corral, which is amazing, teaching you ways to get around using plastic and safer ways of using things like that. And it's also a waste-free event. We have maybe one tiny little trash can for people bringing stuff around that's not from the event. We don't generate any trash. It's all recyclable or compostable. That's a real goal of ours. We're trying to inspire with kelp activities. We have some scholarships for students. We have Sea Star Awards, and we have an Unsung Hero Award for someone who's done a great job just kind of behind the scenes all year. And then we have some fantastic entertainment. We have Queen Green, No Direction, Coast Tribe, and Taranova Drum and Jazz Band. It's always really fun to have people there. Our EcoFest speakers are talking about kelp. Our Josie Iceland, fantastic expert on kelp and all kinds of things in the ocean, lots of different things. And also Kyle Thierman, who has an, an interesting way of looking at the earth and giving awards to people who are doing good things with the earth and words to people who are not doing such good things with the earth, companies. So, keeping us all on our toes.
He's a professional surfer. This guy we're really excited about. He's passionate about helping the environment. He comes from Santa Cruz, and I'm looking forward to meeting him. He's about 24, maybe. So, I look forward to having a speaker like that.
Yep. And the next one, this is our poster. You've probably seen it in the Pacifica Tribune and also the magazine. Also, Hafnun Bay, we've really spread out to Hafnun Bay. The full-page one in there this month. And next is our EcoFest. All kinds of things happen at EcoFest. Take a look. We have some of those posters here for people if you'd like to look at those. And...
I'd like to say that everybody is invited to the EcoFest. And one of the things about our action and EcoFest is that it draws people from all over the state. As a matter of fact, my sisters are, my sister and her, her grandchildren are coming from Wisconsin, and they can't wait to come see the EcoFest. So, people come from all over the states. People come from outside of the state. And, and that's one of the things about the beach cleanups that we do, and also the Earth Day event and the Coastal Cleanup Day event, is it draws people from Modesto, from Gilroy, from the North Bay. And these groups, they bring groups, they bring teams of people, and Jim knows, he gets a team from Modesto every year.
Modesto.
And they can't wait to come and be at the ocean to help the ocean. And I think that's a big draw. I think it's a really important thing for us to recognize that we are capitalizing on bringing all these people, teaching them, and having them go back home to help our ocean and to help our planet, really.
So, we'd like to thank you very much, the City Council, for all this award, all the people here and all the people watching, for all the support you've given us. I'm Jim Pitti, and I forgot to say that, from the Beach Coalition. This is Lynn Adams, our amazing president. And our webmaster couldn't be here tonight, but she's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next is the consent calendar. Is there anyone on council or from the public who would like to remove any item from the consent calendar?
Okay.
Just a couple of quote clarifying questions on item four, disposal of certain obsolete city documents and papers.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the other items?
Still moved.
A second.
Vote, please.
Deirdre's not here.
Hi.
Okay, that passes four to nothing with one absentee. And on item number four.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions for our legal counsel because I couldn't read the notes really clearly, and I do apologize for not calling you in advance with this. I'm hoping that you could clarify for me a couple of the handwritten notes. I'm looking at packet page 30, where there are a few items that were bracketed out, and I can't read the notice that says destroy after April, I think, 2019. It looked like we were adding a couple of years on to those particular items. I just wanted to verify if that was accurate.
Councilmember, if I may, those documents are sent to the city attorney with our proposal to destroy them. The city attorney will go through each and every one of those requests, and there are some requests that we'll, that they will isolate and, and tell us, you know, hold on to it for another couple of years, or hold on to it for another year or so. And so, everything that is before you right now is subject, or I guess with the exception of those things, that the city attorney has earmarked for our preservation for another couple of years.
Okay.
And so, that's why you see those notes.
So, that, I'm to assume then, anything with notes on it is being retained?
Yes.
Okay.
Or if, if there's information, that there's been communication between the city attorney and my staff, and so, it's understood what goes and what stays.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I just wanted to clarify before, just from my own edification and my own understanding. And so, with regard then to packet page 32, the planning files for projects not completed or denied prior to March of 2017. Is this going to be extended? I couldn't tell from the marginal note.
Correct. The note indicates that the project files for projects not completed or denied prior to March 2017. The note indicates that those files that are, they need to be two years old before, more than two years old before they can be destroyed. So, I think the note is just to indicate that there may be some amount of records that need to be retained a little bit longer.
Okay, that I'm pleased to hear because I know that sometimes planning and it's not the planning department so much as just the evolution of planning projects and, and how they move forward. It has a longer horizon. And so, I was just concerned that we not lose the specific documents. And I think those were all my questions. Thank you.
So, the city, just to clarify, the city follows the Secretary of State guidelines for retention. And so, when we are reviewing staff's recommendations for destruction, we are looking at those guidelines to see what they provide for as far as retention of records. And so, we are comparing the recommendations from the Secretary of State to what the city staff is recommending.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve that item?
Still moved.
I second.
Please vote. And that passes four to nothing with one absent. And we'll move on to oral communications. I have three cards. I have Renee Magin Calda, followed by Jeannie Collins, and then Paula Teshara.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Collins. I would like to show everyone this picture here of my son who drowned here in Pacifica on March 26th. Just getting started with his life. Please excuse me, I'm a bit nervous, but I will not stop until this has changed. I am here tonight to represent my son, who came here as a tourist and was swept away in the ocean at Rockaway Beach on March 26th. His body was just found this last Friday. So, we spent 24 days watching, looking, in binoculars, helicopters, and I pray to God that none of you in this room or anyone I know goes through that. He came here, he did not know how dangerous this beach was. He stayed at Lighthouse. He pulled in underneath. They never signed, saw the joke of a sign that you present and say, "It's enough. It's not." All of the tourists do not know this. I've spoken to many, but all of the locals know that here. I even went to the Welcome Pacifica page. There's no mention of the dangers here. The rip tides, the currents, the 50-foot drop-off. I've even went down there and asked the people to get their kids off the beach while I've been here. I was told by someone on the member of this council that there was plenty of signs there. So, when your child's floating for 25 days in the ocean, no, it's not acceptable. Tyler was meant to live a longer life. He just graduated from UC Santa Barbara. He just had a job at Tahoe. He's athletic. He was fit. He had no idea. So, I'm asking the City of Pacifica to reevaluate what you have over here. I don't know if it's because of tourism and money. I don't know. But now, I have to live, and my family has to live without him for the rest of our lives. In my opinion, each hotel in this area should have something posted to not even walk on that beach due to the sneaker waves. And the things I've seen on YouTube are ridiculous. I will continue to make people aware of this, and I will not stop until there's more signage. I will pick it. I will come here. I live two hours away, but I don't care. I'll quit my job. I just pray that no one has to go through what our family's been through, and you, none of you ever experience the grief and pain of not knowing where your child is. He was found by a lady walking her dog. And thank God for that. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is Jeannie Collins and Renee Magin Calda, I'm sorry, Jeannie already spoke. Sorry. Renee, and then Paula.
Hi, I'm Renee, and I'm a relative of the family, of Tyler's family. And I did want to highlight the sign issue for Rockaway Beach. And Rockaway, actually, now that we've been here and as long as we have and dealing what we're dealing with, is, there's two sections. There's a north end and a south end. The north end is right by Lighthouse Hotel and where Rockaway Avenue dead ends, you turn, there's a sidewalk to the right, that entire, there, there is no sign at the beginning of the path. And all the, all the way along, there's no sign at all. There's one sign at the very, very end of the sidewalk as an entrance to a trail. It's 11 feet high, and it is at least 12 feet past the path that goes down to Rockaway. That, but in being responsible, that wouldn't be the only place to put a sign at eye level. It would, you would want it at the beginning. And there, because there's no real fence, there's like a loop chain. But kids being kids will want to climb over those rocks. They look fun. It seems, it's a temptation. The Moonraker, you, I'm sure you guys know that those windows were broken out by the waves. We've seen pictures and in videos of the waves rushing over. Neighboring beaches have put stronger signage. They've, they've put them all over. The south section of Rockaway has more signs. There are lots of little paths. They aren't exactly in the best place. There, there's opportunity for improvement there, too. But there are three different signs there, although there are more than three different paths. And, and one isn't even facing, I think they faced it in a direction to try and catch two angles. But anyway, there's opportunity there. It, it, on surfer websites, we've done some research, surfer websites that rate different beaches, Rockaway is rated as an intermediate to advanced, and it explains that some of the dangers and the hazards. And for beginners to intermediate, they recommend Lindemar or Lean Demar. So, the information is out there, and as Jeannie said, the locals seem to know all this. And, but tourists don't. People who come here unknowing, unsuspecting are not aware. It won't bring Tyler back, but it might save somebody else from having to go through what the family's been going through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Paula, and then Diana Segur and Chris Redfield.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Paula Teshara, and I work for the Pacifica Libraries. The San Mateo County's libraries have been partnering with the San Mateo County of Office in Diversity, Diversity and Equity to bring programs throughout the month of May for Mental Health Awareness Month. We're working towards reducing the stigma and raising awareness. So, we'll have two programs at the Sharp Park Library. On May 7th, we're going to be screening the movie The S Word at 6:00 PM, which deals with suicide survivors. It's a thought-provoking film, which will be followed by a Q and A with panelists from Star Vista, and also Melissa Ambrose, who's a wellness counselor at Oceana High School will be there, too. On May 22nd at 6:30, also at the Sharp Park Library, we'll have a mental health self-care event with Star Vista again, who'll help, help us teach us how to do self-care. Everyone struggles with stress in their life, so come and learn some techniques and practice self-care to maintain wellness in your life. And everyone who attends will leave with a self-care kit. So, we ask everyone to RSVP on our website, www.sml.org. Tomorrow, I'm attending the Board of Tomorrow, I'm attending the Board of Supervisors meetings where they'll have a presentation of a proclamation designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month. So I have some flyers in the back and I hope you can make some of the programs either at the library or throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, followed by Chris, and then Bridget Duffy.
Hi, I'm Diana Seeger, Park Pacifica, thirty-year resident. And I have to agree with the Tyler Collins family. We don't have enough signage and I've watched young children go out and not come back over the thirty years I've been here and it's very disturbing. I'm sure that people that are experts at safety and signage can figure out what's appropriate for our community, but I wanted to be a voice of a local resident who feels the same way as someone who is a tourist. So I agree, living here, I've learned a lot about the ocean, but I think if we're going to have our environment, our economy, then we need to take on the responsibility that that entails by having signage for, to protect the people that come here and generate revenue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, and then Bridget.
Good evening, staff, council. A couple of things I wanted to speak about tonight. Several weeks ago, I spoke about the most recent fatal head-on crash on northbound Highway One. My query at that time was what the city could do to engage Caltrans, to do all they can to eliminate the ongoing issue with the easy access to going the wrong way on the off-ramps. With the new pub opening soon at the old Surf Spot location, what has Pacifica done to do all they can to eliminate another fatal exit at that site? If you remember, a few years ago, there was a patron that shouldn't have been driving, but did. It happened because it was too easy to happen. If you've ever been in a head-on crash, you don't forget it. The second item, I would like you all to please drive by the manor post office on your way home. It's a short drive from here. Take Bill Drake Way to Esplanade. The crown jewel of that tour was right by the post office. This is the consequence of doing nothing to stop it. Bad situations must be dealt with. Don't tell Pacificans this is okay. Several can and should be aided by PRC and groups like Faith in Action and Home for All. With ADUs out of neighborhoods, the scarcity of parking will happen. This is the next layer of the RV issue and it will become apparent. The owners of publicly-stored RVs will soon become aware they've been illegally parked for years. The ordinance have been on the books for some time. You are not helping anyone by not passing the parking ordinance in conjunction with PRC and other limited programs, space permitting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I don't want to get caught up, there's so many things that people said that I want to comment on. For one thing, the signage, this was an idea I had. I wanted to get on the beautification committee and this is my idea, was to work with the beach coalition and their army of volunteers to do beautiful murals that would actually educate our visitors about not only the danger of the ocean, but educate them about, you know, what's in the ocean and how to behave around the ocean. And that was a great idea. But unfortunately, I couldn't even get on the beautification committee in Pacifica. But that means I'm an authentic good guy in two thousand and eighteen. So vote for me. I know, I didn't expect any laughs in this audience. It's a tough audience, I'm telling you. Anyway, the other thing I'd like to mention is this building. This building belongs to the people of Pacifica. The property it's on already belongs to the people of Pacifica. It should be used right now for the emergency situation we have in Pacifica, which is the housing crisis. I have a group of young friends, twenty-four-year-olds, twenty-five-year-olds, who are done with college and they are giving up on living where they were raised. Now, if this isn't bringing people to tears, I really have to start taking some pulses. You know, let's get some medical examinations going on here. Is anybody listening? Twenty-four and twenty-five-year-olds having to live five hours away from their friends and their family and their community because nothing is being done to regulate the real estate industry. I want to remind you all that that is actually illegal in the United States of America. It is actually called treason because no matter where you come from, no matter who pays your bottom line, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. And that means preserving the rights of the people here. You are not doing so. Now, I've tried everything I can to get in here. I've been nice, I've been agreeable. I haven't, you know, called out the troops, but I'm speaking to you on Earth Day and at this point, there's an extinction rebellion going on. And if we can't get our governments to acknowledge the crisis of climate change, allow it to be in the media, and do something about it, rather than throw our money away on seawalls, something drastic will be happening around here. That's all I'm talking about.
Thank you, Bridget. I have no more yellow cards for oral communications. Does anybody else want to speak now? Okay, we'll move on. Council Communications. Sorry, I didn't, Mary.
Okay. So I'd like to acknowledge the Collins family. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I also had a family member who died in this community. It's about fifteen years ago and it was really extremely important to me and to my family that the city listened to us and that the city worked closely together with my family and with the family of the young girl that also died. And so I'm very sorry, very sorry for your loss. I do know that we have a sign inventory, we need to take a closer look at that and just know that I'm with you tonight. So thank you very much for being here. Okay. I attended the Home for All Community Conversation. It was just wonderful. I want to thank Home for All, I want to thank all the staff, Tina and Christian and Peggy from Home for All for getting everybody there. It was an amazing thing to walk into a room in the community that I grew up in and only know like maybe a quarter of the people in the room. And that says that there was a lot of outreach done. And so I'm really excited about that. I'm excited for you guys to come to the Pacifica Collaborative on the next meeting, which is the first week of May, to kind of give us a recap and to talk about what are the next steps. So thank you again for that. I attended the Pacifica Bike Park fundraiser, which is actually a really cool event. And during that time, I met so many families with young children and they're all, they all have bikes. So anyway, it was a really fun event and I'm glad I went. One thing about the Pacifica Resource Center, let's talk about the Pacifica Resource Center. So coming up is the Mother's Day Card fundraiser. It features artwork from Pacifica artists. All of the proceeds go to benefit PRC and the families that they serve with food, housing assistance, and other critical services. So the deadline to give for that is May second. And there's many ways you can do it. So it's fifty dollars and a personalized card goes out to anybody that you care about. It doesn't have to be your mother or a mother, just someone special in your life. Please give and give frequently. I do want to say that the Pacifica Resource Center is there to keep people in their homes. And I myself, I'm going to be accessing services based on a really large rent increase I received. So it is there for everyone. The Resource Center helps everyone, so keep giving to them, we need it. I was at a county training today, a health equity training, and with some members from the Transportation Equity Allied Coalition and also from Samtrans. And so they reminded me that there's going to be a special project starting on May sixth. It's the Samtrans On Demand. So it's going to be replacing the FLX route, so that will not be en route anymore. And it's an on-demand, there's an app, you can call for services. It offers corner-to-corner service and passengers will be directed to a close-by corner for pickup and will be dropped off at a corner close to their destination. It's a twelve-month pilot. After six months, there's going to be an assessment. It's in the Lindemar area and the south part of Pacifica, so I think it's really important for people to understand that the service is going to be available for two dollars and twenty-five cents. And so we're going to see how it goes. It's a pilot project. And so, yeah, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Sue.
Can I ask a question on Mary's? Mary, did you hear anything about what, about people who don't have a smartphone in terms of the app? Was there a, I've asked about that and I was kind of worried about that for some of our back of the valley.
You can do it through the app or a call center.
Or a call center. Okay, great. Good to know. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Thanks. On April ninth, I attended the Economic Development Meeting and we'll be discussing the work plan tonight, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but I just want to commend the volunteers that are working with that group for their positive energy and ideas. It's a really dynamic group and I'm really happy to see the collaboration that they have going with our Chamber of Commerce as well. And one item that they mentioned is the upcoming Taste of Pacifica, which is on June twenty-second. It'll be at the Moose Lodge from twelve to three and you can contact the Chamber of Commerce for information and getting tickets. I was away for a long weekend because I'm on spring break, so I didn't get to go to Home for All and I'm really looking forward to hearing updates. When's your meeting? Thank you. And I did, once I returned from my long weekend, spent a lot of time relentlessly pursuing staff and Assembly Member Kevin Mullin's office and State Senator Jerry Hill's office about our budget request adjustment for our seawall. And while many opinions differ on the ranking priority for that, it is a very significant issue for Pacifica. We need to protect our people, we need to protect our infrastructure, we need to have the funds. So I know everyone here shares my urgency on that and we'll be keeping abreast of that from our city staff. On Wednesday, the seventeenth, I had the great pleasure of serving dinner at the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Volunteer Recognition Dinner, which is the first time I'd had that chance and it was a superb event. So that's all I have.
It's always kind of tough being third, fourth place because you've been to a lot of the same places. So I also was at the Economic Development Committee and I echo what Sue Beckmeyer said about the group. They have some interesting ideas and we're very close to having a second farmer's market in town. I also attended a, they called it Airport 101 because I'm on the airport, airport noise thing. We didn't have a meeting, but basically it was for them to try to teach us some of the acronyms they use. I mean, in one, in the space of fifteen minutes, they'll use ten acronyms. And so it's kind of speed acrimony or whatever you want to call it.
Acrimony.
But I have to admit, the coolest thing was we got to go to the top of the control tower. Now, you guys all see that from the freeway? You don't realize that is ten stories tall. And it was so interesting to see, you know, the planes, the radars and everything else. And then they put us on a bus and they took us out to the airfields. So we, we got pictures where the plane is actually bigger than me because it was landing and we got to see an Airbus land, which was really kind of, those things are huge. So that was really actually pretty interesting. I guess one of the perks you have is being on city council. I was also at the Home for All, but I was, it was packed. I do want to thank the staff, Tina, Christian, and Bonnie for the efforts they put in there and I believe Josh also worked on it. I want to thank them for the efforts they did because what I really liked was the fact there was a lot of new faces that I had not seen at the city council meetings before. Usually when we have events, it's a lot of the same people that come and it was really nice to see additional voices with additional opinions and thoughts on the problem we're having here in Pacifica. After that, I was honored to go be Master of Ceremonies for the initiation of two boys to become Eagle Scouts. And the two of them became Eagle Scouts. One project was rebuilding the fence for the vegetable garden at the Terranova Church Center and the other one was actually building a Garden of Serenity for women's, a women's rehab center up in San Francisco. And they described the efforts they did there, which was really cool. We also served senior, I was also there when we served dinner to the seniors in Action. I always kind of enjoy that because I always see a lot of the people I know and maybe at some point I'll be there. But one thing I did, I did it to also attend commute.org and it was really kind of interesting because there was a woman there that was doing a presentation on electric vehicles. And apparently there is some grant funding for us to install electric charging stations and there is only two in Pacifica. One is in Lindemar Center and the other one is somebody's house that will allow, here in Pacifica, I don't know the address, but that would allow you to go, he or she would allow you to charge your car there. So they are supposed to send me lists or the number of electric vehicles or R and Pacifica and I was thinking if we can get the grants, it might be nice to have one, like the city hall, maybe at one of the beaches, community center or whatever, to see what we can get. Burlingame apparently is putting in, it's either three or six in their parking lot. So I'd probably like to agendize that at some point, once I get the information from the woman that spoke at commute.org. There was also an interesting thing there that I had never heard before that could have a financial impact on Pacifica, and that's Assembly Bill nineteen-twelve. I don't know if the city attorney's aware of that, but apparently GASB, which is the General Accounting Something Board, is, and there was a law passed, Calpers requested this law, it was passed by the Assembly and Senate and Jerry Brown signed it into law January first. And basically what it is, is that for all the JPAs we are in, each JPA is going to have to come to an agreement as to what is their pension liability for that agency. And just in the past week, Pacifica's joined two JPAs. And two of them, one was the water one, we did the last meeting. And I'm not arguing that we shouldn't, but one was the water thing we joined there and then in our place, CCG joined, I forget what it was, but it was a GPA, CCG and the MTC joined regarding, pardon? I forgot what it was for.
See, acronyms.
Acronyms, yeah, right. Okay, I'm speaking cityese. City Council Association of Governments, JPAs is a joint powers agreement where each of the cities, where if, let's say, we can't do something together, they, we join with other cities and we do it together for funding reasons or like transportation or whatever. So basically, some, the two JPAs folded and left Calpers with an unfunded liability. And each JPA is going to have to come up with their own agreement as to how they want to divide the liabilities for the pensions. They're not going to show up on our Calpers, which is the annual financial statement that the city publishes. I think it's in the middle of the fiscal year. Lorenzo would know that, but I know, we read it maybe around January or February. And it isn't going to show up on that, but at some point, it might show up as a future liability for the city. As well as if a JPA was to fold or go out of business, we would be liable for any pension shortcomings of that JPA. And this is a law that went into effect January first. It's AB one-nine-one-two. So it's something that I think we should be aware of. I don't know. There's two ways that if there is no agreement in the JPA about how to handle the shortcoming, the Calpers will make the decision and they'll the CalPERS will make the decision, and they'll either allocate it by the amount of services for like commute.org, we really don't get that much services for them, but they only have one employee. But you go to the MTC, they have a whole building in downtown San Francisco.
Metropolitan Transportation.
Metropolitan Transportation Commission. They have a whole building in San Francisco. So I think that's something, I don't know if we need to research or see how many JPAs we are in, what is our potential, and it's probably going to be a discussion with the council. If each one has to come up with a formula for their share of the pension liability, how is that going to be determined? Is, am I going to determine it by my vote because I'm the representative there? Are we going to bring this to council, and the council has to vote to give direction to the representative? One of the members, city said, what if a city is fiscally not able to afford it, and it just hurts them? Can some cities that get more of a benefit from that JPA deal with it? So I don't know if we want to have a, you know what I mean, a discussion, put it on the agenda, or if the city attorney wants to research it some more, or whatever. So I just wanted to be sure the council was aware of this potential liability out there.
Thanks.
Rather lengthy.
Okay. I went to the City and County Association of Governments Legislative Group. There are 200 bills. They're going tomorrow to meet with legislators. I'm going next week, so I'm not going tomorrow, but I will do the same next week, and we are all talking about housing. It's the most important thing right now. Right after that, the City and County Association of Governments had a board meeting and a retreat. The retreat was to discuss all of the projects that they've done over the past year, the largest of which is express lanes on Highway 101. So that project is going forward, and we are all a part of it. I did read aloud at Sunset Ridge. That was probably one of my most fun things I did in the last two weeks, because I read to first graders, and I had a great time talking about penguins. I attended the Home for All, and I was happy to see that, how they arranged people at the tables. They arranged people who had differing opinions at the tables, so that everybody could speak how they felt, but, but yet, everyone had an opinion, and it was a great event. I was also a waitress at the seniors. I went to the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau, had an event at Falali, which was an incredible place to go in the spring. It was a beautiful day, and we met a lot of people from all over the county. I also went to City and County Association of Governments Water Committee, which I've been big on this whole time. I've been going there for two years. Seventeen out of the 20 cities, plus the county, have approved the Water Agency. There were three more cities that hadn't had meetings yet to approve it. Everybody expects that all the cities will be members of the Water Agency. We will begin that in January. There is a bill going through right now that will clarify that agency, and we have to wait for that, and that takes effect in January. I also went to the Democrats and saw Chief Stidle talking about Pacifica and crime, and lack of crime, and all the other things related to the RVs. It was very good. And I assume you're talking about the friendliest? Were you going to talk about that? Okay, then I'll stop.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I know that Jim and Lynn left, so I have to apologize. I wanted to thank the Beach Coalition for your presentation tonight, and thank you for everything and all the work you do for our communities.
I'll let you, I'll finish, and I'll go to Staff Communications. I'll let you talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor Vardalas. Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. A number of items I'll mention, since you just mentioned Mayor Vardalas, the friendliest city item that appeared in the Chronicle, that came out last week, and I think that that's great. We've been tweeting that out and promoting that, and in my tweet, mentioned thank you to the community, because that's what the article was about, how friendly everyone is here. And segue right into my next item, which is that we're so friendly that we had a whale visit us as well last week, as you're aware. Unfortunately, a dead whale on the beach. This has happened before in Pacifica. We did try to immediately, or as soon as we could contract, to have it towed out to sea, which is the preferred way of handling that, but that was unsuccessful because it was too far up the beach. So the update is that we are currently looking at hiring contractor to bury it on the beach, which is the next best approach to do that, and that will be done this week. That's what we're working towards. So an update about the whale. Also, Councilmember O'Neill, a while back, had the idea of PCTV filming a documentary about the EQ Basin, which was a great idea, and that has now been completed, and will start to air on PCTV, and when it does, we'll also push out in social media the link to that on YouTube. So it's about a 15-minute explanation of the EQ Basin, and Deputy Director Louis Sun did a fantastic job in his role in that video. Staff has been very busy, myself and Assistant City Manager Hines in particular, putting together the narrative budget report for this Thursday night's special meeting and kickoff on the budget process. That report, as well as the goals adoption report, were just posted this evening and are public, and that meeting is at 6:00 this Thursday to discuss those items. The seawall funding request support was mentioned by Councilmember Beckmeyer, and I was happy that last week, in addition to the letter of support concerning the state budget debates for that 1.5 million, we're requesting that Senator Hill and Mullen had sent a support letter, but last week as well, Supervisors Horstley and Groom added their names into support for that request. And currently, support from Congresswoman Jackie Speer is being considered. Earth Day is coming up, as was mentioned in the presentation, and I'll be out there Saturday getting my hands dirty, so I look forward to that. And finally, I did really enjoy last week's PBNR volunteer celebration at the senior center and helping to serve the fantastic packed house of amazing volunteers with, I don't know, some combined just thousands of hours of volunteer work. It's pretty incredible. Circling back to my initial comment about Pacifica being the friendliest city in the Bay Area, and the folks that are in that room and do that work really manifest that friendliness. And that completes my comments.
Also, on Thursday, the 25th, in Half Moon Bay, Hill and Mullen are putting on a, an open meeting on communication in disaster. A lot of it relates to the fact of the tunnel being closed, with PG&E went out in the tunnel, and the tunnel stayed closed for an extended amount of time, and so they're having a public meeting regarding that and any future issues with communication in disaster. So, and Mike?
I did want to, two things. I did want to invite everybody, the council's having its first budget study session this Thursday, 6:00, here at the council chamber. So if anybody wishes to come, it's a public meeting. I don't know if it's going to be televised, but it is a public meeting. I also, we've been getting a lot of good press lately, and I wanted to mention that NBC Bay Area just had the Portola Oloney Show on, and I just checked the website. It is on the website, nbcbayarea.com, and then you just search "Portola Heritage." And it was a half-hour show about the discovery of San Francisco Bay and Pacifica, and you can see the city manager on there, some members of the Historical Society, and it was actually a pretty good show. I watched it already, so.
Councilmember O'Neill, I'd just like to mention that the budget study session on Thursday will be televised by PCTV and will be available online as well.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item is item number seven. It's a public hearing, introduction of ordinance to amend municipal code related to marijuana operation tax, marijuana public safety licenses, and zoning marijuana regulations. And may we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. In 2017, the City Council adopted regulations to locally permit and regulate the retail, testing, and manufacturing of marijuana in Pacifica within the confines of California law. In addition, the people of the City of Pacifica voted to approve a marijuana operations tax measure. Since the effective dates of these regulations, 12 applications for marijuana use permits successfully proceeded through the city's two public phases and were placed on the Pacifica qualified marijuana registration list. All of the 12 applicants were applying for retail operations and therefore have been processed by the city as allowed in their assigned lottery ranking. To date, four retail applications have been approved, two in Sharp Park and two in Rockaway Beach. Three applications remain on the qualified marijuana registration list, one in Rockaway, and two for the same property in Sharp Park. No applications for manufacturing or testing operations have been received. In January 2019, council solicited input from the public regarding additional amendments to the city's marijuana regulations to encourage retail operations, expand potential for cannabis manufacturing operations, and to update the regulations to incorporate and maintain consistency with state law updates. The amendments proposed tonight are based on direction received from the City Council, and would affect three separate and existing regulations in the Pacifica Municipal Code, including Title III, Chapter 18 Marijuana Operation Tax, Title IV, Chapter 16 Marijuana Public Safety Licenses, and Title IX, Chapter IV Zoning. The staff report provides a summary of each of the proposed amendments, which I'll briefly touch on. Staff is proposing amendments that would update the city's marijuana, marijuana-related regulations to maintain consistency with amendments to state marijuana regulations. The state hasn't acted new laws since the adoption of the city's marijuana-related regulations, and edits to reflect these changes would be appropriate. Staff is proposing zoning amendments that would modify the general allowances of marijuana operations, including increase the maximum allowed number of cannabis retail operations in the Rockaway Beach and Sharp Park cannabis operation overlay districts from two to three operations, adding an additional finding to the cannabis activity permit approval, and allowing manufacturers to deliver their own products. Staff is proposing zoning amendments to improve the permit process for applicants by including amendments to allow potential applicants for manufacturing and testing operations to proceed through the application process prior to closure of the initial application phase, defining the process to close the initial application phase, allowing phases of the proposed cannabis activity permit to proceed concurrently, and defining parking standards for cannabis operations. Lastly, staff is proposing zoning amendments to allow marijuana manufacturing operations to extract cannabinoids using only mechanical methods, which includes grinding and/or rubbing cannabis against screens or using heat and pressure. The amendments would prohibit the use of any solvents for extraction. The amendments would also define a post-extraction refinement process, which is a process that would refine a crude extract product from the mechanical extraction to targeted compounds. The amendments would allow a manufacturer to have up to 30 gallons of ethanol to conduct specific, the specific post-extraction refinement activities in a closed-loop system, which also recaptures and reuses the ethanol. The amendments would broaden the production ability of manufacturers and expand the competitive economic abilities of manufacturers without compromising the public health, safety concerns associated with solvent-based extraction methods. On April 1st, 2019, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the various zoning amendments for council's adoption with a vote of four to three. Planning Commissioner Big Stick is here tonight as a planning, as a planning commission liaison. City staff, as well as our cannabis policy consultant, Tim Kumarti from HDL, are available to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Does council have any questions?
I have a question for the HDL rep, whenever he comes up. Oh. Hi, I just had a question. We get the quarterly report of sales tax revenues and stuff from HDL. I don't know, that's probably a different department, but is it possible to break out how much is cannabis on that?
To the degree that we have data from cities that we're working with, yes, it is. Bear in mind that many cities are just now beginning to get their tax ordinances online, so it may be a few months before there's any data included in those reports, but I will inquire about that and circle back.
Okay. So you think at some point in the future, it'll be able to, it's just new, so you have to work out the bugs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we have two cards from the public. Bridget Duffy, followed by Adam Solinger.
I just have so many questions about this. As far as I know, since it became legal in California, or in Pacifica, it has become very, very difficult to buy marijuana here. And I'm just speaking personally. There's only one dispensary actually open in San Mateo County. What is going on? I mean, as the public, and, 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 you know, I'm here not just with me, I am here with the backing of at least 5,000 people from the county that heard me and my plea when I was running for some, some justice, you know, when it comes to this issue. I don't know why the police department is involved with the process. I'd like an explanation for that. It seems like a conflict of interest to one year be prosecuting people for a drug, and the next year, involved in the process of dispensing this medicine. It is a medicine. It cures things. It cures addiction. One of the biggest number-one things killing Americans right now in the United States of America is opioid overdose. People are addicted. The opioid addiction is a crisis in our country, and the scientists have just discovered that marijuana actually helps with addiction, can cure addiction. It cures brain tumors. They've spent millions of dollars researching this stuff, and all they've managed to find is more good things about it. Why is it being so heavily monitored and regulated? You know, it's one thing to be charging the people who used to be paying no tax for a substance that was considered a medicine, to now being charged 30% in taxes, and where are the taxes going? As far as I can tell, the money we haven't even made yet for the next three years is actually going to the police department. So, I mean, this is definitely a conflict of interest, and I just want to remind everybody that we have become warped in our thinking and not listening to the dictionary. The dictionary description of conflict of interest is very, very clear, and it is illegal. It's called profiteering off of the people, and it's a crime. And I just want to remind everybody of that. And can we get going with the dispensaries, for goodness sake? I mean, I have to give my money to San Francisco right now. Doesn't anybody care? 30%, 6 cents on every dollar?
Thank you, Bridget. Adam?
Hello, my name's Adam Solinger. I'm the next applicant in line for a permit in the Sharp Park District. Once again, I want to thank everybody that worked on getting this tax amendment put up here for a vote today. It's been a long period of time. We've been waiting, so to finally get a vote will be very good. Like I said, I want to thank everybody that did all the work to get this up here. One second.
It's okay.
We, we look forward to getting this voted on, a yes vote today. The preliminary vote was all yeses, so we hope to see the same result tonight, and we look forward to having a new, high-quality and safe business on Almetto Avenue, and work with the city to bring so much-needed tax revenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Back to council. We've gone over this so many times, I think that we've asked all of our questions.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion?
Mayor Vadoles, just to clarify, you've closed public comment?
I closed the public comment and brought it back to council, and council has no comments, so a motion is going to be made.
Okay, making the motion here. Should I do all three at once, or do we need to vote on each one individually?
Each one individually.
Okay, so item one, move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only in ordinance of the City Council amending Chapter 18 of Title III Marijuana Operations Tax of the Pacifica Municipal Code and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. So, do you second?
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes four to zero with one absentee. Next.
Number two, move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only in ordinance of the City Council repealing and replacing Chapter 16 of Title IV Marijuana Public Safety Licenses of the Pacifica Municipal Code and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes four to zero with one absent?
And number three, move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only in ordinance of the City Council amending various articles within Chapter IV of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code to amend the city's marijuana regulations and amending the text of the Marijuana Operation Overlay District Maps, which is Text Amendment TA 114-19, and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes four to nothing. We can, and with one absentee. Thank you.
Commissioner Big Stick, thanks for being here tonight. I want you to know that I watched the meeting, and I just want to thank you for all your work.
I'll second.
We are moving on to council consideration. Item number eight, which is Economic Development Committee Work Plan for the year 2019 and '20.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager. I'm presenting the staff report for item number eight, the Economic Development Committee Work Plan for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The Economic Development Committee, EDC, was created by resolution in May 2009 to support the attraction, development, and retention of businesses in Pacifica. In 2011, the EDC membership was expanded to include the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce. In February of this year, the EDC began on their 2019, 2020 work plan. These goals included providing visitor-serving information to residents and visitors on Pacifica events and activities, reaching out to the business community to assist new and current Pacifica businesses, and expanding their community outreach for the city's planning efforts, including the upcoming updates to the general plan, local coastal use plan, and the Sharp Park-specific plan. At the council goal-setting session on March 9th, City Council provided input for the EDC to consider in developing their 2019, '20 work plan. The council also identified the importance of annually reviewing and approving committee and commission work plans to align committee and commission work with the annual council priorities. The proposed EDC work plan for 1920, before you this evening, is a compilation of these planning efforts. In summary, the Economic Development Committee's efforts will focus on identifying new businesses for commercial districts, providing a forum for exchanging information on Pacifica's business climate, and reaching out to the business community, visitors, and residents about the goods and services available locally in Pacifica. Before you tonight, the EDC work plan includes a proposed budget for 1920, which is detailed in Attachment D. The council action recommended by staff is to, number one, adopt the resolution revising and updating the purpose and objectives of the Economic Development Committee; number two, approve the work plan for the EDC for fiscal year 19 to '20; and, number three, refer the proposed Economic Development Committee budget for FY 1920 to the budget process. Staff and members of the EDC committee will be available soon to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Mary?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, and forgive me for not sending them to you earlier. Okay. And maybe this is a question for our staff, too. So, do other committees and commissions have a budget?
No, and, you know, there might be budget, city budget, that is spent in the work that they do, but it's not developed by them specifically and run through sort of the annual budget approval by the council. This is sort of, to echo what Mr. Myers said, this is kind of the inaugural process for how ideally we would really focus the work of committees in Pacifica, and if there's budgetary amounts, we can identify those. It's important regarding the budget that it's still, you know, managed by the city manager's office and by Mr. Myers, but it's available and sort of, you know, tagged for the projects that are identified in their work plan.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about the projects, then, and what the money would be spent on? Like, will it be graphic design, or materials, event planning?
I think what we're doing right now is we're identifying the work plan, and then as the EDC continues to meet, then they will identify those specific projects and what specific money will be spent on. The Attachment D generally gives you a general outline of what the things will be, what those items will be spent for, but I think a lot of that will depend on the needs of the business community and the feedback that they get from the business associations.
I think I was pretty excited about the "How to Start a Business in Pacifica," and I'm hoping that it will be available for people to, like, watch and listen to as well, so you can have some kind of media connected to that.
Watch, listen, touch, share, PDF, website, online, all those outlets.
Thank you so much.
Sue Beckmeyer?
I just wanted to comment that there was discussion at the EDC meeting about this budget, and all of the things that you mentioned were discussed, and I think the area, and it's reflected here, that was specifically anticipating there would be a need for more expenditure was with the outreach in terms of materials, whether that be, you know, and they'll develop the specifics, as Mr. Myers said, but reaching out through, you know, booths at FOG Fest and those kinds of things, or doing some kind of work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and that kind of thing, having leave-behinds, having materials available. So that's what I recall from that meeting.
Mike?
Samantha Hauser, the Samantha Hauser Chair of the Economic Development Committee.
Good evening.
So, hi. I know, did you want to say anything, Samantha, or, go ahead?
Yes, I just wanted to say, this is something that we have been working on all year, and we're really hoping to align our work plan to the council goal-setting and to making sure that we can help bring your vision to fruition.
I was gonna say, I think I've been on the lausanne for the EDC for about two years, and it was when we had the Palmetto groundbreaking ceremony, the commission members themselves dug in their own pocket to pay for that, and I just don't think that's appropriate. And we also had, they also are going to probably be putting together some stuff, because there's been a couple of businesses opening up in town that basically needed some real guidance, and it would be nice to be able to put some sort of printed material together so that they have a checklist on what to do. So, these are stuff that other commissions really, it's kind of unique to this commission, and so that's basically why, I mean, I support this, so, although we have to have a public hearing.
Yes. I served on economic development, and I was, my question is, how come it took you so long to ask for this? So, I think it's been needed for a long time. No more?
Is this an action item?
We need to have a public hearing.
We have, so we have one card from the public.
Oh, we do have cards. Okay.
Bridget Duffy. I'll open the public hearing. Bridget Duffy.
Hi again. Once again, I see this as a real opportunity for our city. Actually, we have a commission starting, and it involves economic development and a work plan. So, if we look at all those words as what they say, and we actually design a commission of citizen, you know, a citizenry, where, and this is a win-win situation for Pacifica, because we just so happen to have amazing, amazing people in our community. People who aren't scientists, are scientists, people who are environmentalists, people who know that there are options today that we did not have a while back, that developing the economy here in Pacifica doesn't have to look like what it looked like in 1990. We have new information. We have new technologies that we're not availing ourselves to. There is a need for energy, there's a need for water in California with between wind, sun, and the water. I cannot see how people can't see a different way forward than the one we had envisioned 40 years ago. I see a path forward where everybody wins, and the earth wins, and this is the moment on planet earth. We're earthlings, right? The earth is in trouble, we know this. Scientists are warning us of a sixth mass extinction that we, as human beings, may possibly be a part of, and we know what's causing it, and we know that we need a transformation that is going to take the effort of everybody. We can't do one, we can't do it like we've been doing it. We need everybody in. We need our governments in, and that's a part of this extinction revolution. The other thing we're asking our governments is to give us a seat at the table. Let us have general assemblies that are made up of citizens and environmentalists so that we know we can give the Lipnis test to the Economic Development Commission, or be the Economic Development Commission, and we can give them the test, is this going to create a greener world, or is this just another, you know, waste of money, taxpayer money? So, these are the questions that we need to ask right now, 2018. Vote for me, Bridget Duffy. I love you all. Thank you for doing this work, and I pray that you find it in your heart to follow your heart.
Thank you, Bridget. I'll bring it back to the council. Council discussion?
No discussion. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution revising and updating the purpose and objectives of the Economic Development Committee, and to approve the work plan for the Economic Development Committee for fiscal year 2019, '20, and to refer to the proposed Economic Development Committee budget for fiscal year 2019, '20 to the budget process.
And is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. And that passes four to nothing with one absentee. We're moving on to item nine, which is the presentation of the pavement condition index report, review the recommended project alternatives list, and resolution of the City Council.
While staff is getting situated there, I want to kick this item off with a couple introductory comments and then turn it over to them. We're going to hear a presentation that goes in to detail and describes our pavement condition index survey and the status of that, and then discusses alternatives for where, for different paving projects for SB 1 gas tax monies that we are required to identify transparently where that money will be applied. The important point that I'd like to make, and you'll also see this echoed in the goals and narrative budget reports that were just posted and we'll talk about on Thursday night, is that the SB 1 funds and the project you're going to discuss and prioritize tonight is not the only paving project we're going to be recommending for this next year, because there are also additional Measure W, half-cent sales tax, county-wide half-cent sales tax funds that are earmarked for streets projects, so we'll be, we'll be in the future discussing and prioritizing what we do with those funds. And as you're also aware, we're conducting an assessment of the entire Public Works Department, and specifically in the streets program, really looking at how that program is structured and the various different tax sources and grant sources that are available, because we are trying as hard as we can to continue the trend that we started last year on seeking one-time money to do paving projects. Continue that trend. That's the only way that we're going to nip away at the pavement condition index status and begin to improve it. So I'll stop there, and I'll turn it over to Seth.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Marquez, and I work with the Engineering Division within Public Works. As City Manager Woodhouse pointed out, this item for you tonight is twofold. The first will be, our consultant, who performed the latest pavement condition index inspection, will present to you their findings and explain the city's pavement management system. Secondly, there will be a discussion and a vote on potential resolutions approving paving projects for the next fiscal year using SB 1 money. With the help of the Pavement Technical Assistance Program, a grant program sponsored by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Quality Engineering Solutions was hired to inspect Pacifica's 90 centerline miles of pavement. They were also hired to write a budget option report to better inform decision-makers on pavement management practices. So without further ado, from Quality Engineering Solutions, here are Ryan Finley and Doug Frith.
Thank you, Ryan, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We're going to give you a little background on the pavement management system, and then information about how your pavements are currently performing. How does this work? I'm sorry. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. So just an overview, a quick overview of the pavement management program. It's a scientific management approach to help you maintain your pavements and spend your budget in a wise manner. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission has developed a software program called Street Saber that has been in use for about 20 years now, give or take a couple, throughout all the Bay Area. They've got 109 cities and counties that are using this software system, and so it kind of learns from itself over time as well. And so, information is collected, stored in this system, and then it helps do analysis reports. But the critical thing is that we don't always just rely on the software output, there's engineering judgment that goes along with any project selection as well. The idea is to manage what you have for the most benefit cost. We know we have to put money into our streets, into our pavements, but how can we most effectively put that in to get the best benefit out of that? Over the last 20 years through the community, starting with federal highways on down to local cities and counties, the idea has to get away from this worst-first mentality that all of our bad streets, we need to put all of our money to, and start understanding that when things are in good, a good state of repair, there's a minimal amount of maintenance or money you can put on those that will extend their life over time. And so, the idea is through this program, we can help extend the lives of good pavements... And so the idea is through this program, we can help extend the lives of good pavements as well as you're going to have to reconstruct some things as they get really bad. It's been proven that maintenance is about 10 times more cost-effective than reconstruction. And when we talk about maintenance, we're talking about seal coats on the surface or various types of treatments that maintain the condition at a higher level rather than just laying your pavement, walking away and letting the environment and traffic deteriorate it until it's cracked and gone and then starting over. And then the other thing that the pavement management program will allow us to do is to evaluate new materials, new construction methods, as those come about, to put that information into the system, run analyses, and see what the real cost benefit would be for some of those kind of materials. It was mentioned, the pavement condition index, or PCI, is a value that's used nationwide. It's a measure of the health of the pavement network. It ranges from an upper range of 100, which would be like a brand-new pavement. As it's, as it's laid, you go out there, it's black, smooth, no cracks, that's 100, down to a zero, which is, you know, very poor condition. They're still drivable, but those are the ones I'm sure that you guys get the phone calls about. And you can see kind of a range on this slide that what we call the good or very good condition are those that are in the 70 PCI range or higher. Good is 50 to 70. The poor range is about 25 to 50, and less than 25 is, is very poor. And so there's different levels of maintenance, corrective rehabilitation, or reconstruction that would go along with each of those. So here's a couple little slides of the cost efficiency of maintenance. And the top graph there, I wanted to point out that this is where we don't need to just let a pavement lay out there and not do anything with. We can put these maintenance treatments on it in cycles every five to seven years or something like that, and you'll maintain your pavement at a good to very good condition. If you just pave it and leave it alone, then it deteriorates and, you know, you lose a lot of life right there towards the end. And so it's more cost-effective if you're in the situation to spend dollars on pavement maintenance than it is rehabilitation or reconstruction. So the types of maintenance we talked about are preventive maintenance. That's when your pavement's in good condition, you just want to keep it that way. A corrective maintenance, you start to get some potholes maybe or wide cracks, you would go in and correct those features through patching, crack sealing, whatever it is. Restorative maintenance would be kind of the same idea, only just on a little bit larger scale. And then the next option would be a rehabilitation, which is typically adding new material to the surface. You may mill off some of the existing material to add the new material. And then in the worst case, we get to the reconstruction where really all you can do is dig up your asphalt that's out there. There's some different treatments you can do, full-dep reclamation and stuff so you don't waste it all, but basically rebuild your, your street pavement. The priorities in the Street Saver program that it uses to define how, the optimal way to spend your budget. And it's based on a functional class that accounts for traffic. So your city was given three functional classes, arterial roads, collector roads, and residential and locals. The arterials are your main thoroughfares that the city's responsible for and then on down to the local and residentials. So it, we can set priorities for each of those to say, we want to maintain the arterials at a higher level of priority than maybe the local and residentials. And we've worked with the, the engineering group to do that. Sections are ranked from the highest cost effectiveness to the lowest. So the program runs, you know, thousands of iterations to rank all these sections based on their current condition. And then based on the budget, it just goes through and starts selecting projects based on that list. And that's where engineering judgment comes in because it'll pick a little piece of this street and a little piece of this street and one over there. You know, it doesn't make sense to do your maintenance or construction that way. And so then the engineers come behind that and say, okay, let's modify this to make it constructible through efficiency. But the majority of funds would go to preventive maintenance, the way the Street Saver system is set up. Your roads that are in good condition, it's going to try and keep in good condition through maintenance. And then it's going to allocate funds for rehabilitation with emphasis on the primary routes, those being arterial or collectors. Here's a shot of your historical maintenance over the last, or historical performance over the last five years. And again, these are small and very difficult to read. We apologize for that. But it does show basically a slight downward trend right at that 50 PCI point, which was our break between what we call a good pavement and a fair pavement. So one thing we can get from this is we're on a downward trend. We would like that to be upward. And so some more money going to maintenance and rehabilitation would be good. The chart in the middle, you can see the PCI values for your arterials, collectors, and residentials. I can't read it from here, but by memory, the arterials are about 65, I think, and the others are 40 in there. And here's a little comparison with all the cities in your county. Like I said, they all use the Street Saver methodology. And you can see right at the tail end is Pacific there.
Belmont is worse, please. Thank God for Belmont.
Okay.
No.
Not according to this, Michael.
He just told me that.
This, this was as of 2017 data collection, so maybe things have changed, so. Anyway, I think we're on the wrong end of the dog here. Either, either way you look at it, you know. We would like to be at the other end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan and he's going to tell you how your pavements actually looked last year.
Yes. Thank you, Doug. So what we have here is a table with the current PCI condition. For the functional classes, we have the primary routes, which are the arterial and collectors, and we also have your residential and local roads. A majority of the network is made up the residential, and I think you have a total of like 90 lane or centerline miles of road in all. As you can see, for the arterial routes, they're in generally good condition, pretty high PCI, which, you know, that's good. That's what you want to, you know, spend your preventative maintenance on, upkeeping those because those are your high-traffic roads. And then you have the collector and residentials, which are more in the poor condition. Overall network PCI of, as of February, I believe is a 46, which is also poor. And then if you look at this pie chart here, you can see the makeup. I can't read those numbers, but I believe it was like 54%, which are in poor and very poor, very poor condition. And then the remaining are in good and very good. So it's kind of 50/50 split there. Here is actually a GIS map, just graphically integrated data. It has your pavement condition color coordinated for each section based on their current condition. So in dark blue, you have the sections that are in very good condition. You'll see you have like some collector routes running into your main neighborhoods there. Then you have the green and yellow, which are, you know, good condition. That would be from a 50 to 70 PCI. So you might see some cracking on those streets, but overall, you know, they're, they're in pretty good condition there. And then for the poor and very poor, these are streets that require reconstruction at this point, or at the very least a milling overlay. We went over several budget options. Here's four of them. We did unlimited funds, which is basically if the city won the lottery, it's going to cost 134 million over five years to get you the perfect PCI. It'll eliminate the deferred maintenance completely, which is just maintenance that has been postponed over time. And then we have the current funds of 600,000 a year. We found that this was not sufficient. The PCI is going to decrease to 38 within a five-year period, and it's currently 46, so that's an eight-point drop. We ran a scenario to maintain the current PCI, and that turned out to be about 3.5 million a year in required funds. In order to increase the PCI by five points, that would be to a 51, you would need close to 6 million a year. So with our first scenario, this is the unlimited budget, I can't make up these numbers, but I want to say the first year is a 70 million drop in the bucket in order to get the deferred maintenance completely eliminated. Like I said, this is just maintenance that has been completely postponed year after year. So this is both preventative and rehabilitative maintenance that is needed in your network right now. So you get a pretty big jump in PCI with that, and then it steadily, I think it maintains around 10 million a year, kind of varies a little bit. And so you get a pretty big jump in PCI up to, yeah. It's in the mid 80s. Yeah. So you end up with an 85 overall network PCI. The next one, the current investment level, we ran it at 600,000. Now, this does not include the funds for the measure W, I believe, so those numbers will have to rerun once that comes in. But you'll see, you know, you still have that 70 million in deferred maintenance that is going to be paid in that first year. And it still increases. You've got a pretty big spike up until 100, you know, 2023, it hits 129 million, basically. So it's steadily increasing. The overall network PCI drops from a 46 to a 38. And then if you notice the stopgap, you've got some of it funded, but there is actually a pretty big chunk that is unmet throughout that period. So this is just stuff that you would use to, to fix the potholes and stuff like that. And in order to maintain the current PCI, you're still seeing the deferred maintenance increase, but it's not quite as, as big of an increase as you would see in the, under the current scenario. It maintains the overall network PCI of 46, but like I said, with the deferred maintenance increasing, eventually that overall network PCI is going to begin to drop again in the long To increase the PCI by five points, we have deferred maintenance increasing, but what's interesting about this scenario is you're spending 6 million a year. If you were to run this for a total of 10 years, what you would see with the deferred maintenance is it would cap out at about 120 million. And then after that, you would start chipping away at it. Same thing with the overall network PCI. It maintains at a 51, but beyond the five-year period, it starts incrementally increasing. So this is sort of like a sweet spot that, you know, gets your deferred maintenance, starts chipping it away, and in the long term, it'll give you the network PCI that you want. So the conclusions that we have is the street network is a valuable asset. It's 255 million to replace it. And if you remember back to the unlimited budget scenario, in order to, you know, completely fix everything in your network over the next five years, it's like 120 million, which is half that. So it's pretty big. Another thing is you want to evaluate innovative maintenance and rehabilitation in order to reduce some of that cost. We were looking at Cape Seals. That's a very good way, cheap, effective way to get long-term pavement performance. But, you know, most of all, you guys need to find some alternate funding to increase your maintenance and rehabilitation funds. And thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions from council. Just, you want to find out where we can get all that money?
The lottery.
Yeah.
Before you moved the couch out of City Hall, did you check for any coins in the cushions? Oh, you did? Okay.
Okay. We do have, so I'll close that and move to the, oh, did you guys have further? No.
If you want to discuss that PCI, we can move on to the second half, which is the SB1 funding.
Okay, let's move on.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Raymond Don Guinness, Senior Civil Engineer. As City Manager said, the, the second item on this portion is to review the projects and recommend projects for SB1 funding. On April 28th, 2017, the governor signed the Senate bill SB1 to address basic road maintenance and rehabilitation projects on both the state and local street system. The code requires that prior to receiving SB1 funds, all eligible cities shall submit to the California Transportation Commission a list of projects proposed to be funded pursuant to an adopted resolution. The attached resolution is in strict format provided by the commission. This year, the city manager recommends the project to be the Monterey Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project. This project will rehabilitate the pavement along Monterey, Monterey Road from Oceana Boulevard to Hickey Boulevard, and that, and includes base repair, two-inch AC overlay, thermoplastic striping and markings, and other miscellaneous work. This project is staff recommendation and will rehabilitate approximately one-half mile of street. In addition to this project, the city manager will be recommending during budget development additional projects for 2019, 2020 utilizing measure W funds. So alternative one is the Citywide Slurry Seal Project. This project would slurry seal approximately five miles of street citywide and consists of removal of existing thermoplastic striping, application of slurry seal, and placing of new thermoplastic striping and marking. Alternative two is the Oceana Boulevard and Sharp Park Road Cape Seal Project. This project will Cape Seal Oceana Boulevard from Clarendon Road to Paloma Avenue and Sharp Park Road from Gypsy, Gypsy Hill Road to the city limits. In addition to the selected SB1 project, the city also needs to list the Palmetto Sidewalk Project. This project was approved by City Council on April 23rd, 2018, and will utilize SB1 funds allocated in 2018. With the relisting of this project in the resolution, the city council, the city of Pacifica is reaffirming to the public and the state the city's intent to fund the project with SB1 funds. Attachment three is the resolution for the recommended project. Staff also attached resolutions for the two alternatives should the council wish to consider one of those other projects. Depending on council's selected alternatives, council will adopt, the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney will sign the correct resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, can you just, like, for the public, just explain why this was, like, why was Monterey Road and Oceana Boulevard chosen, like, in simple terms? I learned more about slurry seal than I've ever learned in my life by reading all this. So, but I don't think that, that the regular public, you know, has gone through this whole report, so.
Monterey Road is a major collector, east-west collector in the city of Pacifica that has a freeway access. So it is a road that is frequently used by a lot of vehicles. And it does, it is towards the end of its life as in, in the presentation shows. So now is the time for the rehabilitation of this road, specifically pavement overlay.
Thank you.
Okay. A couple questions is, do we don't, is that map that was in the presentation, is that the only individual street index we have or the closest thing to an individual street index?
Besides the list, you mean?
Oh, okay. I missed that because I just read on this. Yeah. Okay. I missed that because I'm on a line, I don't get the paper one. Okay. The other thing is too, is from their presentation, they said that maintenance is important, okay? And we're in the present condition because we haven't been maintaining it and it's, we just don't have funds to do it. Is, being we have fixed the Lindemar and most of, all of Lindemar now and most Is being we have fixed the Lindemar and most of, all of Lindemar now, and most of, and a good chunk of Oceana, do we have a maintenance schedule that in two years, we start doing whatever we need to do, so we don't get in this present, in the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the ideal maintenance would be in the next five years, we should plan for slurry seal in the current areas where we did overlay, correct?
Okay. And is there any way to amortize that, so it isn't such a big hit in year five? You know, put a little bit away every year, so we have at least the majority of it in five years? Well, I mean, I, it's kind of a rhetorical question, I understand.
Yeah, as, you know, we have to budget and put money aside, like, amortization of funds to, you know, have, at that five-year, to have the slurry seal project needed to keep the pavement condition for, for the, the areas of Lindemar that we're doing currently.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mostly what was mentioned was that the heavily traveled streets would be the ones that would be taken care of, and when you go into the scenarios, there are a lot of little tiny streets. Heather Court, Aurora Court, Ivy, that are not heavily traveled, but they're on the list for slurry seal. Was there a reason why those were on the list?
So the program basically goes through benefit cost analysis for each street, so those made it on the list simply because they were beneficially correct. We can change the output within the program to heavily weight more towards arterials and collectors. However, we're following a general balance that the, basically the county is following.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Mike?
Hi. No, I just realized, I was looking at their list, and online, it's totally different looking than what their paper print is. But what I was asking is, could, could a consume, one of the citizens or residents call us up and say, what condition is my street in officially? And do we have some sort of chart like that, or is it just that map that was in the presentation?
It tells you exactly.
There is a list in the report that has all the streets and the PCI connected to those, to those streets.
Okay, thanks. There, I can't find it on the staff report online, but maybe it's technical issues with me.
Additionally, the, the software tracks and projects the PCI as it goes down, and we check in on it every three years with visual inspections, but it, it can project it out, so at any point, we can give real-time PCI of what we believe it is.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Neil, the street-by-street listing starts on packet page three oh four.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
There's more.
No, I don't, I'm just, no, I just got a specific complaint today is what I'm looking at.
Okay. Sue?
I have a question about what we're being asked to focus on tonight with this act, with this item. The recommendation is to spend the SB1 funds on the Monterey project, but there is alternative listed on page three, on packet page two sixty-seven, would be an alternative use of those funds, or this is what you foresee spending Measure W funds to do? I need to understand the sequencing.
Sure. So there are three alternatives that are, that are listed in there. Each of these alternatives, my understanding from staff, is approximately a six-hundred or so thousand-dollar project, and our estimated SB1 funds is, is around six-hundred thousand. And Measure W funds, we'll see when we start receiving them in the fall, but they're estimated in the four to five-hundred thousand. So if you have a half-mile of Monterey, and that's a, that's a, you know, a rehabilitation of that is at that cost of about six-hundred thousand, and it's a major collector, that makes a lot of sense to do, is the, the recommendation from staff. And the slurry seal program with the list of streets that you see is a little bit more flexible depending on the funding amount. So that's why for that project, slurry seal, if we had four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars hypothetically to spend later in this year, then we could select the priority streets off that list for slurry seal to do. And then the, the Cape Seal Project is also another one, again, about six-hundred thousand. I, you know, on those other, whatever alternative the council wants to apply, the SB1, the important thing is that we have to just publicly adopt a resolution and provide that to the state to do that, and then we have flexibility in our budget process for any additional funding that we identify to apply to other projects. So, you know, council could select any of the three alternatives, and then the other two alternatives, we would look at during our budget development process to see what we could bite off related to those. Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, we do have two public comment cards on Bridget Duffy. And followed by Tiger.
Somebody forgot something up here.
It's the clicker.
Oh, ah, the clicker. I don't want the clicker. Okay. Thank you again. This is a perfect example of what I'm talking about, and, and I know it involves me saying, "Stop! Don't!" Nobody wants to do that. But we, we are going into a carless future. This is true. GM and Uber, a couple of years ago, went into a contract together to create fleets of self-driving electric cars, and that is in the making, and they're working on the software glitches, but I can envision a world where it's going to be more economic, it's going to be better for the environment, for people to just simply not have private cars anymore. And I know it might not happen overnight, but this is the future we're looking at. So when you say you want to spend seven million dollars right now to repair streets, and you want to say, you, you say you want to spend ten million dollars a year for several more years to continue to pave streets that need repairing, I call that putting money into repairing old infrastructure that is yesterday's technology. Okay? If we re-envision our city, like the quarry, for instance, the quarry is a big source of contention in this, in this city politically. Highway one, yada, yada, yada. What if the quarry was developed as a carless community of people who wanted to live off the grid? They wanted to live depending on solar and wind, they wanted a communal garden in the center of their tiny houses. You have residents of Pacifica who would put their houses up for sale, which would be great for the real estate industry, and would design their life around living closer to the earth. And this is exactly where we all need to start heading, and this is the beauty about living in Pacifica today. We have a blank slate. We live in a town where there has been so much procrastination for the last forty years that literally, we have an opportunity to take all these monies that you guys are talking about and to redesign living, one little piece of the city at a time. And I don't, this is where the People's Assembly comes in, and this is a real honest-to-goodness request to this city council. Please consider putting a, putting this out there to study, forming a People's Assembly that would oversee the whole outlook of the city and where we can go environmentally. We could at least advise, you know what I mean? But it's, it's the missing link in this process of spending tax money without asking the taxpayers what they want, so.
Thank you, Bridget. Tiger?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jazz Trolls, Big Stick of Pacifica. I have absolutely nothing useful to add to this conversation whatsoever. I wanted to tell a small anecdote that I told a couple of years back, and I want to tell it with a slightly different conclusion. So at some point, I was moving a friend and roommate into my house, and she was a fairly tiny lady and needed help securing her bed to the back of her truck, and this became my job in the process of the move. So in the back of the truck, there was a rope, one single rope, with which I was tasked to secure this mattress, this large mattress, to the back of her truck, at which point I was handed the key to drive her truck, an automobile I had never driven before, from her home on the bottom of Crespey to my home at the top of Banyan. And so first and foremost, I wasn't quite sure if I had the skill set to successfully tie this mattress to the back of her truck with this one rope. And then after that, as I'm driving this automobile that I'd never driven before, not quite sure whether or not this knot I had tied was going to hold that mattress, I had to have the lovely experience of driving up Lindemar Boulevard, feeling absolutely every idiosyncrasy of the current pavement condition at the time. And it is one of the most harrowing journeys of my life, praying that her mattress survived whatever knot I tied in that one rope, as I felt absolutely everything in that journey, until finally I made it to Alcante, which wasn't a lot better, going up the hill with gravity working against me. And I'm happy to report that successfully, I wound up getting this mattress to the top of the hill, the knot I had tied was successful. I had told that story a few years back, imploring that Lindemar be fixed accordingly, and at the end of the story this time, I just wanted to say thank you, because I think if I were to make that journey again, my only concern would have been the efficacy of my tie. And it is very, very pleasant to be driving down a smooth path, and I wish Monterey well accordingly, and look forward to the rest of the city hopefully at some point finding the funds one way or the other. And so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Act Two, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Comments?
I think I just, can I just reiterate?
Yes.
Is that okay? So there's no fiscal impact, right? I'm reading that right here. There's no fiscal impact associated with the pavement condition index report and adoption of the resolution. That's going to be something we do separately, right? So it's going to be separate council action is required, is required, right? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that part. And then the SB1 funds would be used for, maybe, for Monterey, and then we'll have an opportunity to look at the other alternatives with the Measure W. Okay? Thank you.
Mike?
I would just say we do the slurry simply because that seems to be, that seems to be the professionals' preferred option, am I correct? You know, we have, the staff report basically says alternative one, alternative two. Am I reading it correctly in that you prefer the slurry with the Measure W funds?
So our preferred project would be the Monterey, and alternative one, which is the slurry seal, is our first alternative, and alternative two, and the second would be the Cape Seal of Sharp Park Road and Oceana.
In the long run, in your opinion, as engineer, which do you think is best? Monterey Road is kind of a, in my opinion, a given, but the slurry or the cap seal, which one do you think would be better in the longer run to get best use of the taxpayer money? The slurry seal or the other?
I think the slurry seal, because it does affect a lot more area and mileage of the road, so it will have a more effect on the PCI throughout the city.
Okay. So my preference would be the Monterey Road and then the slurry seal, since I'm not an engineer.
Sue?
I would like to know, timing again, we think we're going to be receiving Measure W funds in the fall, in approximately?
That's right. The tax is starting to be collected in July, and our first remnants from the county, I believe, will be in the, in the fall after the first quarter.
Okay. So with that, in terms of our upcoming budget process and work plan, will that be incorporated with you foreseeing the receipt of those funds and designing the work plan that you proposed to us for fiscal nineteen-twenty, including then, basically what Mike was asking about alternate one or alternate two?
Right. Yeah, we, we would project to be receiving the Measure W funds, and again, it would have to, you know, we don't know exactly how much would be received, but we'd project that, and during, you know, budget adoption is, of the program, that could be included, and then later on, we could bring back that project to the council.
Thank you. I have another question for the experts here tonight. I, your statement, getting away from worst-first really resonated to me, but it's kind of hard when Pacifica has so much worst. And so the idea of, it looks to me like the alternate one, Citywide Slurry Seal Project that we're discussing would be a way of maintaining what we have now and not having it get much worse, but it seems like we, on the back end, have some terrible roads that we simply are going to have to take the two-inch, you know, grind it down and do the whole process. So do you have any recommendation about how to balance that, or how to, for us, for city staff, how to look at factoring that in?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, it's the concept that you have to grasp onto, and then understand that a road only deteriorates to a certain point, and then it's rough, bad, whatever, and it can sit there for a number of years in that way. It's still drivable, but it's uncomfortable. And so that's what you have to do, is just figure out the balance, but you want to maintain what you've got that's good, because you don't want to lose that into the poor condition either. So, yeah, I mean, the, the Street Saver Program has some of that in there. That's what it tries to do, but obviously through, you know, we, we have to fix the bad stuff at some point.
Right. Exactly.
And so that's, it sounds like that's what the options are, is let's fix a, a poorer portion of Monterey and then maintain as much of the rest as we can with the available funds. So I think the proposed options sound very realistic, and then just, I mean, it's, it's communicating to people that there's going to be a point where bad streets are just bad, and they're going to be bad until we get some funds to fix them.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
I should mention, because I didn't earlier at this point, that, and again, it's identified as one of the council priorities this year, which relates to education about assessment district tools. And that's a financing tool that a neighborhood who has one of these local, really poor residential streets that can't even be rehabilitated, basically needs to be reconstructed, could decide themselves to fund through formation of an assessment district. And this has already happened in at least one, if not two, locations in Pacifica. So that's a, an additional tool, financing tool that exists to the community.
Thank you. Wait. Oh, go ahead, Sue. I just want to say that the, the majority of comments negatively are about the streets, and now thank you for Lindemar, which I'm hearing a lot, so I'm, I'm thankful to hear that, but most of the complaints I get are about the roads and the streets. This is really important, and I'm sure that some people think driverless cars are the wave of the future, but they still need to drive on roads. And I can see that in fifty years. We need roads now, so I, I see the benefits of doing this, and the slurry seal, I think, is because it covers way more ground than the others. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to receive the pavement condition index report, review recommended report, project alternatives list for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and adopt the resolution of the city council. of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2019, 20, funded by SB1 Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
And just to clarify, which resolution is, is being recommended or adopted?
I think Resolution One, yeah, alternative one, I'm sorry.
Alternative One.
What's the resolution number?
It's, that's attachment A.
Attachment Three.
I know, here's the list. With attachment two.
Can I just, just read it right off the agenda?
Yeah, that's related.
Oh.
So it's, it's the Monterey Road?
Correct, it's the Monterey Road.
So it's identified in the package as resolution number blank, parentheses, Monterey Road Pavement Overlay, closed parentheses, and this is packet page 406, 407, and 408.
So does Councilmember Beer need to amend her motion to include Monterey Road Pavement Overlay specifically?
Just to clarify that that is the motion that you made.
That is the motion that I made.
Okay.
I second.
And that passes four to zero with one absentee.
Lorenzo.
And I would like to close this session in honor of Tyler Collins. I know that all of us here don't even have the words to say to you, and thank you. And we close this session in honor of him. Thank you.
Sorry, I blew that.